District Manager Chris Schumaker is present and is Frank going to join us?
Yes.
He's present. Before we start, we get into the workshop, Mr. Guy had requested that our annual picture be taken of these board of supervisors. Is there someone here that can take a picture so we can add it to the?
Roach Gallery.
Yeah.
You want a cell phone picture? I'll do it. And I can take them before I start.
Usually Al would take the picture and has the normal lens, but she's not here.
Well, if you have a skewed lens, you can make everybody handsome and beautiful.
Or if you've got that face out, you can make everyone look older.
We're fighting tomorrow at the restrooms at the rest park.
I'll take a picture and YouTube it.
Great.
I don't know how to do that.
You just have no idea how often it was helpful to have either a photo or at least a lift of floor members. We're just gonna stand up. Or at least for the people who've been a year or something.
I'm not working on chicken.
I'll get in there and go.
I'm the photographer's assistant.
Do you want us, because you want us closer up or back?
You're in pretty good shape right there. It's a good backdrop.
Get a footstool.
Nice, very nice.
One more.
Chris, if you want to give me that gateway way, it's nice.
I ain't right.
Thank you.
I didn't want, I didn't want to break the light. That's why I said camera didn't break.
No, it is comfortable. It's comfortable.
Thank you for a vote.
The first order of business is a board workshop and it's on the rules of procedure.
Mayor and Chair, would you wish me to proceed?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. I'll briefly, there's two items in the agenda that I was, I've got last time, the sort of first segment of the rules for discussion for workshop. And then I'll have subsequent workshops on other parts of the rules for other board meetings. And the first one, the meeting book is the gateway, is the meeting protocol and meeting procedures. And I handed out a red line version. It's easier to read than the black and white version that's in your packet. So I think it's easier to see the strike throughs and underlines possibly in the next chapter. And the only, only changes where I corrected it from the three or five minutes that the board reflected in that's consistent with it. It's in the front of the board book at the present time. Then I had a nice conversation with Mr. Guy with regards to parliamentary procedure. And Barnes and Noble actually sells this under stories. And I ordered it online and picked it up in Naples. It's a parliamentary procedure at a glance, new edition, O'Carfield Jones, and it's based on Robert's Rules of Order. And it's a really handy document, and really the way it's organized and layout is very handy. There's those flip pages and flip sheets and not as bulky as it's archifiling and easier to use. That was about. Yeah. And Mr. Tinkell swore that he would come through it for me and point out the hot spots. Mr. Guy, excuse me. And so when you get to the bottom of page three, rules of debate, considerations of motion, the red is the suggested change. Again, this is for workshop purposes. While Robert's Rules of Orders are not formally adopted, the board will follow the rules outlined in that parliamentary procedure at a glance, new edition, which is based on Robert's Rules of Order. And I put in there, and again, this is just for discussion purposes, that unless another party is designated by the board, the district council shall act as parliamentarian to the board. If the board thinks that's appropriate. And then the mic, I added that to the extent not inconsistent with the rules, the O'Carfield Jones book, the following rules of debate and consideration of motions shall be observed by the board. And I added a specific reconsideration section at the end, and Mr. Guy, I hope I got it correct. At any minute, we talked about reconsideration. Some governmental bodies would allow reconsideration after the meeting in which the action is taken, some allow it up to two weeks later, some require it within a shorter period of time. This provides that any request for reconsideration has to be at the meeting upon which the action was taken. And that if anybody is in the audience still that spoke on the original topic, they get a chance to speak again for reconsideration. And the reason why it's also helpful is to do it in the same meeting is that if you award a contract and the party starts taking action based upon that contract, if there's a mechanism for motioning for reconsideration after that meeting, it gets really awkward because you can put that contract on the limbo. This way you decide that day whether you're gonna reconsider any action taken. And then at the end, it's just a cover shot from the parliamentary procedure at a glance. Question?
Go ahead.
I'm not the left field here. I'm.
I looked at and reviewed the document that was a revision draft November twenty nineteen that was in the board book, but this doesn't match up at all with what you passed out with red line.
No, this is.
They're totally different.
This, this is at page ten. They got a little mixed up when they were putting the, if you look at page ten of the board book, pages ten to fourteen were the meeting protocol. And they got slid in between the meeting protocol and the rules of procedure.
Ten to fourteen on mine is emergency meeting, public comment. Yeah, this is the one I copied this out of the board book. In fact, there's only eleven pages totally in the board book.
My board book has, I do ten to fifteen, I'm sorry.
What was your first page?
My first page was a procedure.
Yeah, okay, that's a mine. Mine says gateway services, protocol and meeting procedures.
That's what we're on now.
That doesn't look anything like this one.
Yeah, it is. Oh, no, this is different. This is rules and procedure, this is the meeting protocol.
I brought these, I thought you passed out a red line.
Yes, that's right here. And you can borrow mine.
Oh, then there must be one that I've got that I haven't opened up then. No, nobody.
Again, I'm not sure, my book had that or this.
Inserted, okay, we're back on same deal. Okay. I didn't have that red line here, so, okay.
I'll.
I was trying to find that.
And you're wondering what, Tony is speaking Egyptian. Mr. Guy?
Okay, I'm back, I'm back on page.
I didn't know if there are any comments by board members.
I, yeah, I do, but I will let the others go first. I just want to thank them. Mr. Guy?
On page four, we have the red at the top.
Yes, sir.
Unless another party is designated by the board, the district council shall act as parliamentarian to the board and shall advise the chair.
Okay.
In other words, I don't want, just have people think that the district council is ruining the meeting, that the district, the district council is gonna advise the chair as to what.
Procedure.
I think accent and trade type.
Where did you, where was that Bill?
That's at the top of page four, where it is, where the red is.
Gotcha.
And shall advise the chair on procedural matters. Did that, did that error?
How about the one you just came up with? How about this one? That's not it. How about this? That's not it.
How about mine?
Thank you. That's why I'm looking at what you're talking about, isn't it?
Yeah. That's what Ed was talking about.
Mr. Banks?
Uh, nothing this time.
Are we just doing what, the first two pages or are we doing everything?
But right now, this is just the meeting protocol draft. I'd say all four of the pages are that.
Okay.
Or five pages.
I think then go back to C, citizen's right to be heard, C four. I was saying provision, the board, they weren't gonna be interrupted, da, 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 da. Are we talking about agenda or non-agenda items there? Because anybody can come in here and talk about issues that are pertinent here to their five minutes. We shouldn't have any reason of objecting to any statements they make in that five-minute period. So I didn't understand where that was coming from. If we were just making people come in here and only talk about agenda items, I could see that, that we allowed non-agenda items so they could talk about anything. Now, you can leave in the part of that that may restrict or where it gets to be frivolous or repetitive or out of order or something like that. But I don't see that we have any right to stop anybody from coming in and talking about anything that's pertinent to these there. CDD is any time.
Mayor and Chair, I'd like to comment, I think that's, it's a good idea to clarify that, that in the first sentence, but it goes to adding.
What page is that on?
Uh, page three. I'm grabbing page three, page twelve of my agenda book. Page three of the document. It's of the.
It's going, handing out this red line.
It says meeting protocol.
Hand it out today or last meeting?
Today.
Well, it was in, it's in the book, but it's black and white.
The book is.
And that's the rules, there's other ones.
Okay, that, that's the one I'm missing.
As well as I started with a while ago.
Yeah, that's what I was trying.
I think I handed that out.
Hand it out today?
Yes.
Says. It's gonna look like this one.
Yeah, I don't, I don't. This is all I have. It's the joint agreement.
Yeah, that's what I.
These are the two.
These are the ones.
This is what I brought.
Okay. Like I said.
Matt and Chair, going on.
Oh, here we go.
Do you have a copy now?
I wouldn't get in along so well, too.
Oh, partner, going on.
But if we, on that topic, if you could focus on that, the board could find, could insert after the word presentation, any presentation asked to an agenda item.
Or, or in the title, say restrictions of comments deemed not germane to the CDD. Yeah, so they come in and they're gonna have a discussion about their HLA.
Right.
I mean, I don't think that's pertinent or.
Well.
Well, maybe this is what mine would be.
The, no, no, I, I'm not sure if you can really do that. I think if they have five minutes, they can speak on anything.
Yeah.
No, even if it's not germane to the CDD, my, the classic example of that was, a number of years ago, I attended a seminar on local government, and one of them was the First Amendment issue. And it was the compilation, the Hillsborough County Attorney of every speaker is appearing before the Hillsborough County Commission. And the topics ranged from abductees, aliens, lights in the air, there are all kinds of topics that people would just talk on. They had issues with including those people from making any comments like that, they just let them talk and let them leave. And so that's why I'm sort of hesitant to, to think, to have greater restrictions on that.
So you're saying revise this to allow them to speak, period? With notwithstanding frivolous or unduly repetitive.
Well, if they're frivolous and duly repetitive or out of order, they may, they may end up saying, you need to slow down and you can't totally stop them from getting up there.
That's, that was my original intent.
Should we do that one alone then? Is that the consensus?
Yeah, you don't want people to come up one after the other and talk about how to make potato salad. I know, that's funny, but that's, that's, that's happened when some people are trying to keep a meeting going.
Sounds like filibuster. Sounds like a filibuster.
Yeah.
I don't know, just as long as we recognize that people can come in here and they have the right to speak on issues that, in my opinion, if they're CDD related, but they're not on the agenda, they can talk about it.
Yes.
Well, as long as the chair knows that the chair has the authority to ask him to sit if they're not talking about things germane.
I really retired it for out of order.
Yeah, I, I love that.
And that's the one that I have the most concern with, that I think has really only been an issue for me since I've been here. And it only really happens around election time. I mean, the, the time when Jim Brand got up and made personal accusations and false claims.
You shouldn't be allowed to do that.
That is something that should not happen in this boardroom.
That was frivolous.
That's the only one that I think I've ever had a real issue with.
Going, okay, so we're good with that?
Yes, sir.
Going back up to number one, C, this right does not apply to a meeting that is exempt from two eighty-six oh one one. I've got two eighty-six oh one one, and for the life of me, I can't find a definition of anything that's exempt.
But no.
I don't know what that's meant.
Two eighty-six point oh one one are public meetings, you need to open to the public. There are certain meetings that are closed to the public, attorney, client, closed-door sessions, discussions about security systems, you can close meetings to that.
But what I was getting to tell you is I didn't see a listing of exempt meetings in two eighty-six oh one one.
No, it's not in there. There are another sections of the Florida statutes, and that's the problem with the legislature and your wisdom.
Okay, but here's, here's my problem. A meeting that is exempt from two eighty-six oh one one, two eighty-six oh one one to me is not pertinent. And then you got or and nothing. What goes in behind or?
Or a meeting.
Oh, that's pertinent, D, okay.
Right, correct, there's, no, but a meeting that is exempt from two eighty-six oh one one, they put it in different sections of the Florida statutes, the closed-door session, one dealing with against security systems, and there were some others that.
Okay, 'cause what, I was looking and hoping that when I read two eighty-six, it would have a listing of those. It didn't have a listing.
Not so lucky that way.
Yeah. Okay.
So do we, since you mentioned closed-door sessions, do we call out here what, where is recent rights under proposed sessions?
What I could do is, I can, I'll provide a list of that as a crumbly system because the legislature may change it from year to year. I'll develop a fair little.
And that's, we would piggyback on statute, right?
Yes, you can only, you can only do it in the Florida statutes, correct? Because the Florida statutes say you have to publicly open meetings, and then it also creates a different section of the contentions for that.
That would, that would probably be nice to, if we could call that out.
I, I would skip not to put it in here, but just have a separate.
We'll have a, for as long as it's referenced that we.
Going on.
Let me make a note of that, that's a good suggestion.
Going on, number six on page four, just a clarification, by motion to reconsider made by a member who voted for the majority of such motion is made prior to what you were talking about earlier that's in the red. Is that a statute? Where did that come from?
No, that's not.
I've never heard that before.
That's, that's, there are enough different ways for reconsideration to be, Robert's Rules, I think it has to occur at the same meeting in which the action occurred.
I can understand that.
And that's, and that's for this.
But why does it have to be made by a member who voted with the majority?
Well, that's always the case. In every rule that I've seen, Robert's Rules and every other.
Okay, so that's what I'm getting to, Robert suggests that.
And other rules I've seen, yes.
Okay.
And one thing that's always, that's, that's a normal, she's the matter.
But you see that book is, do we have copies of this going around or do we just go?
I think what we'd land on is that.
I need to read it.
Is that the guiding, is that the guiding format that, that we would use?
I want to go get it and read it.
Yeah.
Or I would say yes, when we.
What possible suggestion is that, I just ordered one copy, I can leave it here with Chris and the board members can read at the leisure, is that?
Because there's that one, and, and there's another one that's, and it's an abridged version of Robert's Rules, it's kind of simplified. I can't really tell it, but I'll look at it, but I think if we maybe could recommend, if we all land on, okay, here's our, here's our guide.
Well, I thought this was the Happy Meal.
That's what, that's what this is.
This is the Happy Meal.
No, what I'm saying, as a, as a procedure to follow, and we've got this, this guideline, but if there is, you know, I think every board member should, should be familiar with, you know, at least the core concepts of, of Robert's Rule, and I'm sure most of us are, but it would be nice to distribute a book like that to everyone to use.
I just don't know what's in there, so I'm.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, whether it's that book or if it's a.
If it's board's pleasure, I'll order enough copies for the board members and then give them to Chris to distribute.
Well, I haven't looked at that one, but I'd like to compare that one to one that I've used, which is like an abridged version of Robert's Rules, it's really easy to follow. And so that, and that may be right in line with it, I mean, Bill, is that one that you recommended, Bill?
Yes, this is the one I used to use at the board table for twenty years.
That's all, that, that's all I had at this point.
I hear you, Ed.
If it's board's pleasure, I'll order copies for the board members each time.
Sounds good.
Is it, so it's, it's this one, right?
Yes.
Or, or is it this one?
It's both.
Or is it this one? That's what I'm checking.
My machine was called. You have no idea how many, myself, how to copy.
I think he's egg dog started already.
Unless he feels like that's how many times he's gotta put something in front of us for us to remember.
That's the real, well, you know what, that's the real abridged version for all the.
Did you get more than one copy of that?
I did not. I didn't even, I didn't get this copy, this is the one that Tony gave.
Cause I got a copy of the protocol and meeting procedures, but I didn't get a copy, a red line copy of the.
See?
Rules and procedure, okay.
And Ed didn't get one, so I don't know who, I don't know who Tony's handing out copies to.
I got the rules, but I didn't get this protocol.
Yeah, I didn't get the protocol.
That's why when he was reading, I thought, what is he reading from?
Um.
Okay, it was a stupid.
And going back to the protocol, I, just, just for simplification, I thought in, on item number one, quorum in voting, unless it's a specific rule we can't change, I'd like to say the rule shall be in alphabetical order, period.
The board has something.
I mean, with rotate, I mean, rotating the motions during a meeting to this, that first I start in alphabetical order, and then the next time I have to remember, okay, I'm starting with the second person in line with alphabetical order. And then if there's another motion, somebody calls from a voice, well, you gotta remember it's the third person. So it's only five of us, let's just go in alphabetical order.
Why not? That's, that's a pain to go, you know, this, this ain't Congress and it isn't the impeachment hearing.
So I wanted to just say the rule shall be in alphabetical order, period, and remove the rest of the sentence.
I agree with.
And then I know that we had talked about, maybe a year or two ago, about recording our motions in the meeting and having a motion basically booked. We'd started like, you know, what the county does, they have the green sheets, the blue sheets, the greens, blue sheets, yeah.
Yeah, somebody has green sheets.
Yeah, it's blue sheet, yeah, someone's got blue and someone's got green, but I think it would be very helpful. And we're, I'll speak for myself, I'm, I'm not always as good at stating the motions exactly as, you know, they're, as I would like them to be, and Tony, you jump in and help us. But I think documenting those, those motions might, might be advantageous for us moving forward.
What also might be helpful is, is far as instructions, Jim, for mark on the minutes, and I've seen this with other board minutes meetings, there's actually a box with a bold.
I thought we did.
You know, make sure we did that every time.
We do that in the minutes, right?
Yep.
So at least you got a chance to correct it if the board's approved.
And Mayor and Chair, if you don't mind, just one more thing, and I'm not sure if it goes here or.
Can I please?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Thank you. On page two, I just wanted to, and I know that this can change at any time, but that the approval of the minutes is usually part of the consent agenda, which we don't really have at the top of the, I think that comes after the engineer's report, we usually do the consent agenda. Just pointing that out.
I'll move that down.
And.
Does it, does that matter?
Probably not, I just, you know.
I, I, I think it's a good point, I mean, once again, it has the qualifying language in there, it can be modified at any time, but I think the general public can maybe be more helpful having it in the order that you typically have it. So I think it would be a good.
Cause I realize that could change, but I just wanted to point it out. And then right below that, it says the board reserves the right to modify or amend the order of business and to add items to the agenda. I'd like for there to be something there that says that that would be time-sensitive items only, not that we can just add things to the agenda that we want to talk about. I think that's unfair to the public to be adding agenda items that they're not aware of are going to be on the agenda.
I know that Kelly does it all the time.
Yeah, and it's.
All the time, I go down there to the meetings and they indicate, does anybody have anything to add to the agenda? They'll add one, two, three, four, five things.
Exactly, and that's, and the public doesn't have prior knowledge to be able to come to the meeting and speak on it. They can sneak just about anything and they will.
Well, that's happened, I've seen that.
Yes, they have.
All kinds of local governments.
Yes.
And what I would suggest is that make it a general statement, that generally.
Generally.
Items that are.
Time-sensitive.
Generally, generally, this will be limited to items that are time-sensitive, because I don't want you hamstringing yourself.
Yes.
Right, I agree with that.
Because the determination was time-sensitive.
You might get an order from the county or the state that tells you do something, and they're gonna say, well, what on our, we'll say it's not on our agenda. And you'll say, well, what?
That would be time-sensitive.
It might be something important, may not be time-sensitive, you still want to discuss and take it up.
Just puts a wiggle word.
Well, I think generally.
Generally.
I like that, so generally.
I think we self-govern there pretty well today.
Not, generally not be added unless time-sensitive.
And under order of subject appearance, number one, I just wanted to add the manager or chair shall read the title of the main agenda item, because.
Okay. Sorry, am I here? A manager or a chair?
Yeah, please. And I think that was, oh, I had, yes, that is. Mr. Banks?
Yes, so in regards to agenda items, and this is more of a procedure than I think what we need to document here, what I would love to see happen moving forward is at the end of the meeting before adjournment, either the manager or the chair, just give an update on what is on the docket for the next board meeting. It doesn't have to be fully bagged down, but if we've got items that are earmarked for the next board meeting, it would just be nice to have a heads up. And what we have currently for the next, the next board meeting is items, dah 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 dah, knowing that there could be things that are added.
There would be under, between supervisors' request and miscellaneous correspondence, is that? And we just say upcoming meeting items or something.
Yeah.
General.
Yeah, something in general, I think that would be fine. Notice of upcoming meeting items.
To, to your point that we would like to point with regards to items of any other agenda, I've seen too many county commission meetings where six hours into the meeting, after ninety percent of the public is gone, the board under their affection will take us major substantive matters. No one's around. I mean, the county commission, that's, that's.
You're suggesting that that's purposeful?
The county commission, no, I never said that.
But you should have seen, you should have seen everyone in like, all the confusion in the audience when the school board was voting on the high school, and it was just an item, and that someone made a motion to approve item whatever, and it included like six. So people were waiting, did, did the school get approved? Did not? But it was, it was embedded in the, in the grouping, which was confusing.
And that gets to the point of the chair's comments, which you could point to in ways here, you know, reading the title of the meeting agenda every time, that way the public really knows.
There was something interesting that I thought that we don't do, and I don't know how often it even comes up, but at the beginning of the meeting or prior to going into the action items, there is a request to pull or consideration.
We do the consent.
Consent, consent agenda.
We do that on the consent, I always ask, does anybody have anything they want to pull from?
But that's only restricted to the consent agenda.
Right.
Not for all items. I think that's. I think that's...
Yeah, I know what we did on consent, yeah, okay.
They have a lot more consent agendas.
Yeah, I think that's why everything's baked into the consent.
Their consent agendas are huge.
Three, four, five pages.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sometimes it does.
Anybody have anything else on...
Protocol.
Protocol.
Thank you all, good discussion, very good discussion.
Okay, the rules and procedure then is next.
Yes, and there were modest changes to this, uh, mainly from formatting and correcting, but the, uh, I believe the biggest part is the suggestion by Mr. Tinkell, is that on page six, under voting requirements, uh, adds the second, adds language, voting requirements, voting, conflict of interest, ethics brochure, financial disclosure. And, uh, as that section, there's a middle paragraph that was added, that each board member shall memorize themselves with a brochure that describes the divisions and floors, ethics laws, as well as the processes of the floor commission on ethics entitled, Guide to the Sunshine Amendment and a Code of Ethics for Public Officers and Employees. And provided the district manager shall annually order sufficient numbers of the most current version of the brochure and provide a copy to the board member. I think that's a good addition. And did that seem to be those subjective, or other ones are just sort of cleaning up any net items from that?
Mrs. Flaherty, anything to add on that?
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Guy?
No.
Mr. Banks?
No, ma'am. You're just doing page six only, correct?
Yeah, the rest of it, I told him nets.
None of it? None of it.
I was actually doing the whole document, if there was anything anybody wanted to discuss, cause there's not a lot of changes.
Page, I'm, I'm okay with six, but I got questions on the next couple pages.
Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, the rest of them, I didn't make any changes, but, uh, everything's fair game.
Uh, H, I cannot find, I went through the, the, the specific authorities listed, I went through the laws implemented, and I could find nothing in any of those that referenced where paragraph H came from, nothing.
What page do you have, please?
Seven.
Seven.
Nothing, absolutely nothing.
I didn't, I was talking between now and then, I didn't do that properly.
I'm looking for a statute, I'm looking for anything, cause I can't find it. I, in fact, I work with boards all over the place, and I've never, ever, ever seen language to this extent, never. Uh, then the other one is, is relative to it, if there is language, is the language delineate between, uh, professional services and non-professional services? For example, if we're interviewing, uh, monitor, engineer, lawyer, whatever, as opposed to we're going out and taking bids on sidewalks. Is there, is there a differentiation?
There is not a differentiation if the board wishes that that's appropriate to the board. Again, this is what, within the realm of the board, on this, this particular, no contact or communication is authority for it's in statute, but there's no requirement in the statute that you do this.
See, I, I didn't require anything, I didn't require anything.
The, the, the one I need in the other statutes provides the authority, but there's no requirement.
I, I was hoping, I didn't do anything pending that you had something, but, uh, I'll try to, uh, modify it with some wording and I'll get it to you.
About professionals versus non-professionals?
Yeah, yeah, or about, the, the, the whole thing especially is the professional versus non-professional. The only problem with this that I, the only problem I've seen with this, and that's, that's gotta be discussed where I've seen people do it, is they'll put a clause that if during the selection process and or the, what do you call it, uh, request for proposals are out, if you have contact with somebody, you have to notify, you have to notify, in this case, the district manager, that you had contact, but that's it, there's no prohibition, there's no prohibition. And certainly not a prohibition that would say Billy Bob in some construction company calls up to ask a question, then finds out that in accordance with this, his firm just got debarred out of that deal, that's not right, that's not right.
And, and again, this was born in one of my other districts, and again, the board has Latin, great Latin, if you wanna have it.
Let me rewrite what I see on this as being a little bit more, uh, less restrictive, this is, I think it's absurd.
Would Mr. Tinkell provide that to me, if that's okay?
Yeah, I'd wanna do further discussion on it, because I think, I think that, once the, once the RFP is out on the street and bids are coming in, I'm not quite sure that each individual board member should be contacting those people that came in with bids.
This goes both ways, Margaret, that's the problem, goes both ways. I think it, it can be cleaned up to, uh, cover the intent, but, uh, right now, it is so, uh, so tight, it's unbelievable. Like I say, I've never seen anybody have language like this, uh, at all.
Yeah, typically, as far as the competitive solicitation process, it's very common, I've seen in the counties that have dealt with under recurrent policy to prohibit any vendors from having any contact with anybody who's a decision maker, other than the procurement department that's handling the procurement, you know, and they can't contact the manager, they can't contact the board, county commissioners can't talk, the city council, that's typical. Uh, the other provision in there with regards to a board member initiating contact was born out of one of my other districts where there was a significant activity on the part of one of the board members and the other board members that, that, we didn't wanna have that, and so that's what this language came for.
Let me look at it and see if I can...
And again, if that's appropriate, and I can incorporate it and have it on another agenda packet, the one in January, but not workshop, but just for further discussion, if that's acceptable to the board.
Let me, let me work on it.
Okay.
That's what I think I had on that page.
Ed, you gotta be careful there, when this or other public body have, uh, multiple projects going on at one time, may have, uh, someone who has, uh, been awarded a contract and is actually working on a project, have a question that needs to be answered, and they also are the part, are a party who wants to bid on a subject or proposal. So you have to be real careful the way you word that thing.
Well, the fir, the first thing you do is, in the specification, you make it clear that you can talk to the man upstairs, and unless he puts it out as an addendum, it means nothing.
Now, we've had that, we've had that in our proposals.
That's the way you do that.
Yeah.
But this one here is, uh, gets into, uh, the issue of, uh, competitive solicitation, which implies to me this is just bidding-related issues.
Well, I think we need to find that same problem.
That's another issue, yeah, I, I could see that this paragraph be extended to not only bidding, when you're in construction. Another example, contacting...
This is only during that, this is only during that competitive solicitation process.
That's what I thought, but I think Doug hit the nail on the head.
Okay.
It, it could be expanded such that, good example, we've had this discussed before, uh, I would make a phone call to Danny, or I'd make a phone call to Tony, those guys are very reasonable, with somebody else, I could make a phone call and we get a bill for five thousand dollars. There needs to be clarification, how do we do that, how do we handle that? Who has the authority to make contact with either the lawyer, I think everybody has to have access, but because of this silly sunshine law, I can't call you up and say, "Margaret, I just called Tony and I talked to him about X, Y, Z." We can't do that, so this makes it difficult, but maybe this needs to have some explanation of that, because there comes times, and I, Tony and I've had one without getting into detail recently, where it was necessary, it was necessary. How do you do it, how do you handle it? How do you handle it?
And I think, what I was thinking of was the ex parte, the, when there's bidding process out, or there's gonna, a bid is gonna be awarded, I know at city council, they'd have to declare whether they had any ex parte communications with anyone that was bidding on the project.
That's what I was saying early, if you have any contact, you, in our particular case here, go to Chris and indicate, hey, Billy Bob called me up and he wanted to know, dah dah dah.
Yeah, and, and some, some organizations, I'll take the harder, like, like a white, third right line approach of no contact, that makes it a lot easier than, and some will have the, you can talk, but it has to then be disclosed prior to taking the action, uh...
And we're gonna see that, I mean, even with our, like, look at Lake Banks, we've, we've got contractors currently in flight and those that are bidding on, you know, the next set, that's where I think there's, and, and that's just not a short-term thing, but that's, that's a great example of where we could have engagement in that point, I think, we just either need to be clear that during the bidding process, that we have an existing competitor currently doing work, that they need to interact either directly with the district manager or, you know, and let him facilitate, uh, you know, connection between...
Eric said, well, it's a blackout.
But I do think we need to, that competitive solicitation needs to be defined a little clearer.
Again, that gets, what you're talking about is the issue that I think needs to be added, and this is bidding solicitation.
Yeah.
You're talking about after contract award, and that one is much more dangerous.
Yeah, this is RFQs, RFPs, investigations that bid IT, anyone, anything that falls under competitive solicitation.
After a contract is awarded, and anybody from the owner that gives anything in the way of advice or, uh, to a contractor that got influence has bid, hold on.
Yeah.
You got problems.
Oh, yeah.
So, we're, we're all kinda saying, there's a little bit more...
More to...
Expansion on this one, okay, no, I like the approach too, I think that towards the public law and the resident wealth, has that kind of...
And do we, I mean, do we need to split that out, I mean, competitive solicitation and is there another section, which is ongoing?
I, I think I would just call it contact and then put A during solicitation, B...
Competitive solicitation and then ongoing engagement.
Like H1 HB, yes.
Yeah.
H1 H2.
H1 H2, yeah, I agree. That's all I had on that page.
Anything on any of the other pages?
Page eight, I'm sorry, page eight, uh, A104, public meetings workshop, just question, I've asked this for fourteen years, and I don't know, why seven days?
That's statute.
It is statute.
Yes.
Put the newspapers right there, you know? That just gives us no flexibility to take, and having to get stuff ready for these meetings seven days in advance, when, uh, trying to get documents in is not easy, especially for the professionals.
Well, that, this relates, well, this relates to meetings other than those that are in your schedule. You know, we had the one schedule that the board adopted, scheduled for a year, and that was placed in the paper, and that takes care of all your regular meetings, anything else that happens, though.
Uh, okay, maybe I'm, I'm referring to the agenda items that must be in the board book seven days in advance. Makes it difficult, cause how many times have we come in, uh, you've done it, Danny's done it, and I, I did it a hundred times when I was in this. You come in, you don't have some of that stuff in seven days, you gotta wait for somebody, and to put it off for another thirty because you didn't get it in seven, to me is absurd.
Well, the statute's kind of interesting, the statute dealing with what has to be available online, uh, says that at the time, the agenda has to be there headed, seven days ahead of time, and anything in electronic, that's available in electronic format at that time has to be part of it. So, I, I think this is more conservative, so if it's not available, you can't put it there seven days ahead of time.
And it doesn't have to be all inclusive either, right, I mean, as far as...
We can be walk-on items, you can have, oh, yeah, that's not precluded.
We, we've done that, I just wanna make sure that we can continue to do that, because you're dealing with agencies, they will give it to them about your seven-day requirement, as we know, we found that out with South Florida.
And one way that the board's done it, and other boards have done it also, you put just a placeholder agenda item on there, you may not have the backup, you may say backup to reproductivity at or prior to the board meeting, and that's, that's a way to address that. Because, yeah, I mean, the legislature, you gotta hear from the wisdom of the websites for special districts.
The, the, going on, the next one I got on, page nine, agenda, uh, I've said this for many times. I would like to take, and as a supervisor, have input into what goes on or into an agenda. The way I do it on my boards, I just send out a notice and say, here's what I've got, please add, get back to me within twenty-four, forty-eight, sixty, whatever hours.
Do you think anybody that has the...
Cause I can't call you and say, hey, Margaret, put on, we need to talk about this.
But you can call him.
Well, the problem is, it doesn't say that right here that I can do that. It's between you and him, this way it's, the implication is, or the chair.
Well, but the final, the final, like, finalization of the agenda is between Chris and I, and it's always been that way with the chair and the mayor.
And this is part of...
But you can call him, so I'd like this...
Then let's just, just add...
Possibly to the board member, you know, at least ten days in advance, or because to normally make the seven day, ten days in advance, many meetings may suggest agenda items to the manager.
Well, and that's where, that's my point earlier with having visibility at the end of the meeting, here's a notice of future meeting information.
But I don't know, that it, it, it pops up quicker than that.
Well, but at least it gives us line of sight to, I mean, if Chris says, hey, and by the way, we have these three items, and then you could say, well, what about this item that was brought up a couple weeks ago, that we need to follow up on, or, you know, in your supervisor comments, you could add, need to make a recommendation for, at least it opens the door for us to have a little bit more conversation and insight into what's coming in, in the next agenda, before the actual board book goes out.
Yeah, Tony, if Tony puts the wording in that says ten days of contact, board members, they contact Chris.
Requesting agenda for reclamation.
Uh, uh, that's fine, that's all. Uh, next item, page ten, public comment, we do it, but I don't know that it's spelled out clearly, and that is, we have a public agenda, you know, a lot of boards do it, where they have the public be able to talk at the, the beginning, but a lot of times the public come to want to hear somebody make a presentation and then wanna talk. And that gets into that issue of, uh, public comment and the time for, uh, time of, reasonable time of discussion. For the most part, the chair has always recognized when somebody comes up, and I wanna, I think we should continue that, cause if something comes up that they didn't know about because they just heard it from the speaker, they should have the opportunity to, to bring that up if they didn't know about it at the time.
I don't have a problem with that, time for me.
Time for me, I agree with that.
So I don't think that needs to...
Do you have any need to change anything?
No, I, no, I, I, I just said that I think that we have done it, uh...
Yeah, the, the more frustrating...
But if we're gonna do it, we either need, I, I think, we need to at least maybe have some type of...
It should say something about, uh, based upon presentations made after the, uh, public agenda, uh, public will have an opportunity to, uh, question, to talk.
Or the chair reserves the right to, uh, open for discussion. Yeah, allow...
I'll go with that.
Well, that may better be in the meeting protocol, uh...
That's why I waited to this, cause this is where I found it.
Because it talks about ordering subject appearance into speakers, uh...
Wherever you wanna put it, but I think it's...
Or could table public comment for...
And we've allowed people to do that.
We've allowed people, yeah.
Yeah, cause some, some organizations are very frustrating, and make you sign up well in advance, speak on a topic that's twenty items down on the agenda, and you make your comments, and then the other comes up, staff responds to your comments, and you can't respond to their comments, I've seen that happen.
We're pretty good at it, maybe we'd, you know...
It doesn't happen in the Midwest, I guarantee.
We've got four people in the audience today, if someone wanted to comment on something on the agenda, I think we'd be liberal to allow them to speak their mind.
The board's always been excellent about that, yeah.
That, that's all I have for everything.
Anything else from anybody? All right, we'll move to the next workshop, organizational chart and standard.
Well, thank you all for the good comments and great discussion.
Thank you.
No, really, these are, I know it sounds crazy, but I like the kind of discussion.
Thank you.
Goodness, thank you.
There he is. You're up.
Frank, can you rotate that, or is that the board book model, I use here, or is it an image? I thought I could rotate it.
Yeah, he's gonna hand, I was gonna give him the... Excellent.
Oh, I thought this was the old one, sorry, I thought it was the one that you were putting. Yeah, no, you can't.
And I really wanted to give you an update, and just briefly, you know, historically, um, starting with Rod Senior, um, putting together a succession plan and an org chart where...
I say, please give Rod credit for this. We're here in the end though.
But it, it, it was basically the same at the top as you were looking at before, where you had a general manager, a utilities manager, an office manager, and a public works manager, um, those three positions under the district manager. And the slide that I gave you today, the handout that I just gave you, is basically how we're operating right now. And we have that, that same setup, but we do not have the public works manager filled, nor do we have the stormwater position filled yet. And I've, I've gone over to a stormwater people, where they've come in and gone through the interview process and actually filled out all the background paper, and were in the process of doing, um, their testing, et cetera, and, um, that same week, they both changed their mind, one of them had just found a spot he thought it was better for him, and the other one, his employer counter-offered him. I put, put the advertisements for the position of public works also in the Stormwater Journal, on Indeed, and also on the FASD site, and also on Craigslist. And while I got a fair amount of response from Craigslist, um, we went through all the responses, and we did not get one candidate suitable for that public works position. And part of that is, is everybody's working, everybody's busy right now, and especially when you get into stormwater and public works, um, those are just coveted positions, and a lot of folks are out there working in those fields, um, that have experience or seasoned, typically aren't gonna leave their jobs at this time, because they're vested in the various retirement systems. So it's, it's been tough to get candidates in.
How long's that position been open?
Well, it's been open for seven months, eight months, yeah. And on the stormwater, I actually went up to Tampa to a, uh, technical workshop they were having, and during that workshop, I went around and did the hard sell, I went into each session and I handed out flyers and talked to the people in the beginning of the sessions, talked to them about the position, to try to sell it through the professional association, and, uh...
And I'd probably argue too, that that public works has been up longer than that, cause I don't really feel like we had the, the person for that role to begin with, I mean, as far as what?
Yeah.
Our, our problem is, is that ninety percent of what, the way this chart is, is done, ninety percent of our public works responsibility is our stormwater system. That's why I think that if we're having troubles finding that public works person, maybe we wanna skip down and see if we can find that stormwater lead, but since I think we're looking for somebody with characteristics of both in the position, you're probably looking for the same needle in a haystack.
Well, it, it's tough, and, and that's, you know, I did another, um, org chart where I kinda did that, where I made a operations manager, and there's been one of those iterations in the back in Gateway Two under the district manager, and then you basically have your lead employees in those areas, and I agree with you a hundred percent, Mr. Tinkell, a lot of, a lot of the public works... lot of, a lot of the public works is stormwater, and the other side of it is the pavement and the street lighting, and we're in pretty good shape with the street lighting with Billy being on staff. So it's really bringing in the paving-type person, yeah, and I would say same thing too, a lot of the paving, you know, we're hiring contractors to do that type of work. And my focus has been really to find that skilled lead person versus a manager, but I'm showing you there what we're operating under right now with those three positions open, one of them's a maintenance staff that we're interviewing people right now, and have some really solid candidates, and from the results today, I'll re-advertise the job or change the job positions.
Mrs. Flaherty, I never thought we already had someone for maintenance, yeah, tell me we had someone for maintenance.
We had a fellow, we moved out of utilities and maintenance, and he's not with us any longer, so we advertised the position again, and had some really good candidates, and one thing that was kind of a fall down, we were looking at hiring trainees type, and bringing them in and training them, and that hasn't worked out so well for us.
Okay, all right, is there a reason we don't have a last name for Felix? Everybody else has a last name here, just names?
If so, then I would just have to look at putting it together.
I mean, I just wondered if there was a reason, because...